Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council, as we do to people's work. At this time, council members, if you would, please stand for the invocation that will be given by Father Charles Smith from THE Trinity Episcopal Church, the granddaddy of them all, as we say here in Portsmouth. And then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, it's good to see you, and I'm hoping you'll, before you take your seat, give us a little words and update on the renovations and the re-grandopening on November 1st, if you would.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
My brothers, my sisters, let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon everyone who holds office in our city, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices, to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
We're going...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir.
If you've driven past Court and High Street, you've undoubtedly seen the big wood up on all the stained glass windows, and you wouldn't believe how many people called, "Are you going out of business?"
No.
The answer is no. We're renovating for the future, so for another 253 years, there can be Christians on the corner of Court and High, serving the city of Portsmouth. The renovations are going well, and should be mainly complete within the next six weeks or so. The bell tower will take probably another 18 months or so. But everyone who can, please come on November 1st, which is Sunday, at 10:30 for the grand reopening. It'll be a great time, big party, want to get everyone from the city there just to see what's been done, and to welcome you back to Trinity.
All right. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, thank you for coming. Members of City Council, if you would, please indicate your presence electronically.
Six members of City Council are present.
Thank you. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting on July 27, 2015, a call meeting on July 28, 2015, and a regular meeting on July 28, 2015. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. The minutes have been adopted, 6-0.
All right. As you can well all see, our clerk is not here tonight. She's enjoying a well-deserved vacation, and we've got the best in the business here beside her, and I promised her that we won't keep her long tonight. So if y'all will help me keep my promise to our deputy here, and this is my gift to her, so Anita, if you would.
Yes, sir. City Council rules require a limit of up to three minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your three minutes, you will see a green light. Two minutes into your remarks, you will see a yellow light. At the end of three minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your remarks at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demanding fashion, demeaning fashion, sorry. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Public hearing, 15-288, Public Hearing on Use Permit Applications. Item A, UP-15-07, Glendale. Jacqueline Campbell, representing the modern Free Tri-State of Virginia Grand Council, requests a use permit for a fraternal lodge at 21 Cavalier Boulevard. The property is designated as low-to-medium-density single-family development on the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. Vision principles, neighborhoods, and a sense of community, and quality of life. Electronic roll call. I have no registered speakers, but Ms. Campbell is here, if you all have any questions for her.
Mayor Wright, members of City Council, my name is John Hartley, Planning Administrator in the City Planning Department. As you heard the clerk read, this is a request for a use permit from Ms. Campbell, essentially to take an old Masonic Lodge building that's located on 21 Cavalier Boulevard and resurrect it as a lodge facility for the modern Free Tri-State of Virginia Grand Council. I kind of skipped way ahead here. This property is located, it's on Cavalier Boulevard, but it's really off of Main Street. If you recall, we had a rezoning where there was an issue with billboards and residential uses. It's essentially right behind that, so it's at the end of Cavalier Boulevard. The building itself was built back in the '60s, with some additions added in the later '60s, and was used as a Masonic Lodge for many years. It has now been vacant for many years, and because of that, the ordinance requires a use permit to reopen it as a lodge facility. It is entirely surrounded by residential uses where it's located, and you have a picture of the surrounding residences on the screen here. There are essentially two main improvements that are required to the property, above and beyond what needs to be done inside the building. One is there is no improved parking lot, and the zoning ordinance requires that a parking lot be constructed to, based on the ratios for the number of people that can be accommodated. The other thing is, because it is surrounded by residences, there is a buffer yard that is required along all of the property lines that are adjoining single-family residences. And so that's reflected in this slide by the green perimeter buffering. So those are the two main improvements that the zoning ordinance would require. There are a number of conditions that you have a copy of in your packet. Some of the items that are included here is the need to do the site improvements, hours of limiting the hours between 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., limiting outdoor activities. There is essentially a domestic kitchen in the building, limiting the use of that kitchen and less than until it's upgraded to more of a commercial kitchen. And then there's, in working with the building official, the maximum number of people in the building is 119, with no more than 50 upstairs. The Planning Commission considered this item at their July meeting and recommended approval 6 to 0. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and ask if there are any questions. And as the clerk indicated, Ms. Campbell's here, if you have questions of her.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
This is a public hearing on item UP-15-07. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please go forward, give your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak on this item. Seeing no one come forward, this public hearing is closed.
Move for adoption.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically.
Okay. Very good.
This item has been approved 6-0. Item B, UP-15-08, Downtown. Rochelle Scott is requesting to amend the conditions of a previously approved use permit, UP-11-05, to operate a daycare center at 915 High Street. The amendments proposed are to extend the hours of operation to 5:30 a.m. to 11:30 p.m., and allow drop-off and pickup on High Street. The property is located in a mixed-use corridor on the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Again, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, my name is John Hartley, Planning Administrator in the Planning Department. This is a request to amend the conditions on a use permit that you approved back in 2012. It was proposed back then as a Montessori school, if you remember. It's in the block just west of Chestnut. It opened and operated for about a year and a half, and then closed down. And so Ms. Scott, who lives in the Parkview neighborhood and recently received a use permit to operate out of her home, has decided to move her facility over here and take over the facility on High Street. What she's asking for is fairly simple. This is a photograph of the building. It is in the downtown T-5 district. Here's an aerial photo, and the surrounding uses, there are a couple of Phoebe Square and Victory Square in relative close proximity. These are, this is a picture of the back of the building, and High Street as it is, and there have been some fairly significant facade improvements along this section of High Street. And the apartment building behind it, Club De Porres, which is just down the street from it, the buildings next to it, and then these are photographs of the alley and the site plan. What is requested is extending the hours to start at 5:30 and close at 11:30. Right now, it's limited to 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. The other issue is that she's requesting that they have drop-off and pickup on High Street. That was an item that was inserted by the Planning Commission back in 2012 over concerns of the traffic. When they considered this at their meeting in July, because of the late, early and late hours, felt that it was more important to have people picking up and dropping, have the ability to pick up and drop off in front where there's more traffic, more light, better safety. And so they concurred also with allowing the pickup and drop off on High Street. And so again, the two main changes that are being requested are extending the hours and allowing drop-off and pickup on High. With that, Ms. Scott is here, if you have questions. The Planning Commission did recommend approval by a vote of 6 to 0, with the conditions as modified in your packet. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions. And again, Ms. Scott is here, if you have questions of her.
And then drop-off and pickup hours from 5:30 a.m.
To 11:00.
11:30 p.m.
Correct.
And drop up. Okay.
Councilmember Meeks.
Thank you, Mayor. Only concern I have is, it is a club, you know, within the same block, correct?
Correct. Club De Porres, yes.
That's the planning, I mean, did y'all take that in consideration for the late pickup?
They, there, the Planning Commission was aware of that, and staff were aware that that club is there. There really wasn't any discussion about late-night pickup, given the fact that the club is there. It's a fairly, I'll call it, well-behaved club. Haven't been a lot of conflicts and problems that we're aware of.
Those are old guys. They go to sleep early.
Yeah.
Some are bishop friends.
I didn't, Mayor Wright, I didn't say that. You did.
I know them well. They are a very good club.
So we never, it was never really discussed as being an issue or a problem.
Okay. So we hadn't had a lot of complaints?
No.
That's, I'm sorry.
Councilman Church.
Thank, Mayor, you all answered basically what I was going to say. I was going to tell you something. It's not really that kind of club. And I was at a planning commission meeting, and I did have a sidebar conversation with some of the commissioners about this, and that was the consensus, that it's not that kind of club, and, you know, so we wouldn't have the kind of issue. But due to the fact that it is a use permit, and if that's changed, we always have the ability to come back and fix it, and take the hours back to where they were. But we should give it an opportunity to make it happen.
Okay. Very good. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I was just going to say, I applaud Ms. Scott for the concept, because I know, my understanding is, my understanding is that this is really to cater to the needs of a lot of the folks who do shift work at the Naval Hospital and that sort of thing. So this is marvelous to have this kind of facility downtown, convenient to where those folks work. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Just wanted to see your face and make sure you got on television. Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Thank you.
Hey, how you doing? I went to school with her.
You did?
This is a public hearing on item UP-15-08. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please go forward, give your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak on this item. Seeing no one come forward, this public hearing is closed.
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been approved 6-0. City Managers' Report, 15-289, Adoption of an Ordinance Accepting a Grant in the Amount of $5,000 from the Virginia Commission of Arts and Appropriating Said Funds in the FY15-16 Grants Fund for Use by the Portsmouth Museums to Support a City Cultural Arts Grant. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and a sense of community, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
May I approve? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been adopted 6-0. 15-290, Adoption of an Ordinance Accepting a Grant in the Amount of $10,550 from the Business Consortium for Art Support and Appropriating Said Amount in the FY15-16 Grants Fund for the Outdoor Sculpture Competition and Exhibition at the Portsmouth Art and Cultural Center. Vision principle, lifelong learning community, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been adopted 6-0. 15-291, Adoption of an Ordinance to Appropriate $20,498 of Funds Received from the Economic Development Authority of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, in the FY15-16 General Fund Operating Budget for the Payment of Six Months of Rent for Economic Development Department Office Space. Vision principle, efficient response of government, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
May I approve? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been adopted 6-0. 15-292, Adoption of an Ordinance to Appropriate $228,325 in the FY15-16 Public Utilities Operating Fund from the Public Utilities Unassigned Fund Balance for the Purchase of Equipment and for the Removal of Sludge from the City's Waste Lagoon. Vision principle, efficient response of government, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Mr., just a moment, yeah, we asked in the work session if the manager would allow our fabulous director here to give us, and the public, an overview of this item, as well as convey an educational message, if you will.
Okay.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. Again, this is just to recap what we discussed in the work session earlier. This item basically has two components. The first is, in essence, a reappropriation of $108,325. This is to, this is for purchasing of capital equipment. It's for a tractor and bush hog and mower boom that we use to maintain our rights-of-way for our transmission mains and force mains. We pay for this out of our operating budget as an enterprise fund. We don't do it in our CIP. And we ordered this piece of equipment several months ago, but it was not delivered by June 30. And so as a result, even though we encumbered the funds, we had a purchase order and so forth, at June 30, the encumbrance goes away, and those funds revert to our unassigned fund balance. And so the delivery is scheduled, it should be here within the next week or two. The tractors at the distributor were waiting on the attachments. And so the proper accounting practice requires us to come and ask you to reappropriate those funds, so we can pay for it using the funds we already encumbered in FY15. So that's the first part. The second part is $120,000, and this is for a project where we, as part of our treatment process, we have, the byproduct of our water treatment process, the waste product goes into a lagoon, and then the solids and the waste settle out, and we refer to it commonly as our sludge lagoon, but the sludge that settles out, we are required, we have a residuals management plan, that's a result of a longstanding consent order from DEQ, that we have to manage that, and so we have to remove that periodically. And the way we've been doing that for the last several years is we've been doing it on an every-other-year basis. So we budget for that, and every other year, we would remove a large amount. And this year, in FY16, we've moved to an annual removal process. And so we, as part of our budget, we put in $800,000 for that, and quite frankly, we just underestimated, and we did not budget enough. And so the bids have come in for that, and so we need an additional $120,000, both for the removal and also the requisite inspection and testing that goes along with that process. And as I indicated before, when, we were moving to an annual process, so we did a bid process for, and it's for multiple years, it has an escalator clause, so we'll know in future years how much that amount is that we need to budget for. So in future budgets, that won't be an issue. We'll be able to budget that exact amount, and we just, again, just underestimated. So the proposal before you is to do an appropriation in the total amount of $228,325. Again, part, it's from our unassigned fund balance, we have sufficient funds, and of course, the part for the equipment was already encumbered for last year, and those funds were not spent, and we're just asking the council to please reappropriate. And I can answer any additional questions if you have them.
Okay. Thank you very much for that explanation. I'm going to yield to Councilmember Church.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you for that, Mr. Foster. And I just want, and Mr. Foster, I believe this is your last meeting with us?
It is. Yes, sir.
So, you know, Mr. Foster has overseen the downtime master plan, swapping out all the meters and a bunch of other things. So I just want to thank you for what you've done, your time here in Portsmouth, and wish you well in your future endeavors.
Thank you very much. I've enjoyed my time here greatly.
Thank you, sir. Good job. All right. Madam Clerk.
We have a motion. We're in need of a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been adopted 6-0. 15-293, Adoption of an Ordinance to Accept a Primary Extension Program Grant in the Amount of $46,800 from the Virginia Department of Transportation and to appropriate $46,800 in the FY15-16 Capital Improvement Fund for Use in Connection with the Pavement of Turnpike Road from Utah Avenue to Kings Highway. Vision principles, neighborhoods, and a sense of community, and a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been adopted 6-0. 15-294, Adoption of a Resolution Committing $5 Million in Funds Appropriated in the FY15-16 Capital Improvement Fund as Matching Funds for a $5 Million Grant in Revenue-Sharing Funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation towards construction of the replacement for the Churchillin Bridge northbound lanes. Vision principles, neighborhoods, and a sense of community, and a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been adopted 6-0. 15-295, Adoption of a Resolution Committing $250,000 in Funds Appropriated in the FY15-16 Capital Improvement Fund as Matching Funds for a $250,000 Grant in Revenue-Sharing Funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation towards the Design for the Replacement of the Paradise Creek Bridge. Vision principles, neighborhoods, and a sense of community, and a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for adoption.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been adopted 6-0. New Business, Item 15-296, Boarding Commissions, Councilman Edmonds.
Dr. Edmonds, is there anything to report tonight, sir?
Not yet. Two reports.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. 15-297, Items Submitted by Councilmembers.
Okay. Councilman Church.
Thank you, Mayor. May I just like to move that we add an item to the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add an item to the agenda. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been adopted 6-0.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Dr. Edmonds.
Mayor and fellow councilpersons, I move that Dr. Lydia Pettis Patton be appointed as City Manager of the City of Portsmouth effective September 1, 2015, and that the mayor, acting for and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Portsmouth, is authorized and directed to sign an employment contract which has been distributed in connection with this motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically.
All right. Mr. Moody.
Did I understand my colleague correctly that the agreement's been distributed?
Will be distributed.
Will be distributed.
Will be distributed.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Councilman Moody.
And also for the record, go ahead, Madam Clerk, and then I...
This item has been adopted 6-0.
And for the record, Dr. Whitaker is not here. He is also on a vacation, but wanted to make sure that we conveyed his approval of this fabulous lady coming back home to Portsmouth to do great things. We think we have a very historic opportunity here to trail some new blaze, blaze some new trails and do some things here in this city that hasn't been done in quite a while. And we're looking forward to her arrival and for the things that this city has in store in its future. So I share it with Dr. Whitaker that I would pass that message on in his absence. Next item, yes. Vice Mayor.
Are we under items submitted by councilmen?
Yep.
Okay. I have a couple of things. I was busy last week while you were on vacation, bringing proclamations all over the city. I certainly want to thank the Coast Guard, and again, wish the U.S. Coast Guard a happy 225th birthday. I'm always all about girl power, and I was surprised to learn, and you may be too, when I went last Saturday to the Coast Guard picnic, their official picnic for their own staff at the base in Churchillin. I was greeted by the commanding officer, Captain Brenda Kerr, and the XO, who is Commander Catherine Hardy. So it's all about women in the Coast Guard right now. That was followed by, on Tuesday, the 4th, the actual birthday of the Coast Guard. Downtown at the Vrenell Lanes, we had a cake-cutting ceremony with Rear Admiral, Vice Admiral Dean Lee, who was Atlantic Area Commander, and Vice Admiral, Rear Admiral Steve Metrick, who's a 5th Coast Guard District Admiral, and most of the staff out of the Federal Building. It was really nice. There was a lot of folks out there doing... There was a lot of folks out there doing, they cut the cake with a sword. It was a really nice occasion. They asked where you were. I explained you weren't thinking a thing about us, but it was a nice occasion. I was also happy, this past Friday night, to take another proclamation to a man who's very special to me and has had a business in this city for more than 50 years, a gentleman named Tom Butler, who has owned a hair salon on Portsmouth Boulevard since 1964, and celebrated his 80th birthday on Friday night, who happens to have cut my hair for the last 30 years. But that was very exciting to see, probably about 100 people. He had three ladies there whose hair he'd been cutting for, literally since 1964, which was pretty amazing. And then just a reminder that Sunset Thursdays continue. We lost last Thursday due to weather, but at Portside, we will have entertainment this Thursday from 6:30 to 9:30 and food and drink available for sale. And then on Friday night this week, we have a special shagging at Portside event for all the shag dancers and it will be, that will be from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And that's with the original Rondells. And of course, that's right there on Bill Deal Street. So lots of fun things going on.
All right. Very good. And Dr. Edmonds?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to add to the ears of those that are here tonight about the transitioning of a great senior pastor in our community, Pastor Gregory Thomas, who passed at First Baptist Elm Avenue. And his funeral will be this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. at the Mount Lebanon Baptist Church in Chesapeake.
Thank you. Yeah, let me just add to that. Pastor Gregory was clearly a pillar in this community and a guy that enjoyed people and enjoyed and embodied the phrase "meeting folks where they were." He clearly loved all of Portsmouth residents and he did an outstanding job of relating and communicating with young people as well as older people. And I was saddened when I returned from my vacation Sunday to find out he had passed and I went and attended his church service Sunday at 11 o'clock just to be there to show my support because he meant that much, not only to the city, but to me personally as a person that has always encouraged me and supported me. And his wife, First Lady Renita Thomas, stood up and spoke to the church and did an outstanding job. It was standing room only there and talking about Pastor Thomas and the things that he's meant not only to that church on Elm Avenue there, but what he's meant to the community. I think he was a 1972 graduate of IC Norcom. And somebody said, yes. And so it was, it was really touching and it's, and again, it goes back to this whole piece on leadership, when you're not here and to be in that church and to watch those members and how they responded and rallied around the First Lady and that family. And then for her to stand up and talk the way she did was, it wasn't a dry eye in the place. But thank you, Dr. Edmonds, for mentioning that. I will not be able to be in attendance. I am leaving and taking my daughter to Georgia Tech and I'll be sending a letter, but Dr. Edmonds, I ask if you would speak on behalf of us and convey our condolences to not only his family, but the church family. Thank you. And let me also, I see we have, we, I've got a couple of things here I want to do. But first, I want to bring up Dr. Juan Nagill, our Director of Parks and Recreation and maybe our city engineer, because I want to, this has been an issue that has been all over Facebook, our boat ramp. And you know, we had to shut it down for some repairs and there are some issues with the tiles and what caused those tiles. And it is back open. It is repaired. There has been since a small glitch and we're asking both of them that come up to just be able to announce to our citizens where we are with that, but more importantly, to the boaters and the people that utilize that, the things that we can and cannot do on that ramp so we can keep that thing open. And so if, I'll yield to the engineer.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. On July the 29th, the boat ramp was reopened. That weekend, we received a port, a report that there's somewhere issues with the retrieve side. That Monday, the same company that repaired the boat ramp went down and found that four of the mats were displaced. Two of those mats were put back in place. Still work needs to be done to two of the other mats that were displaced. However, the launch is, it's on the retrieve side, but the entire boat ramp is still usable. Just to give you a little history of some of the work that happened while they were repairing the boat ramp, they removed over four truckloads of sediment. They placed, at least on the retrieve side alone, over 100 tons of gravel crusher run at the base for those mats. Those mats are approximately 10 by 20 feet long. They weigh several tons. They need to be lifted by a crane so that workers can get in there and do the work. What causes that issue at the ramp is, some of it's caused by storms, but the majority of that is caused by commercial boaters coming in with the high-powered motors in the vicinity of the launch, cranking the motors up, whether they're launching or retrieving. What happens is it creates a wave action. It builds that sediment up in front of the launch. It displaces the material underneath those mats and as that material goes away from those mats, they start to cave in and tumble over themselves and it makes it a hazard for boats retrieving and launching. So it makes it a hazard for boaters trying to use that facility. It is a free facility. We would ask that those people using the launch not crank up their motors until they get a good distance away from it so that it's, everybody can use it in a safe fashion and it'll stay in a good condition.
Thank you. I mean, because that is a valuable asset that we have there and it's been there for quite a few years. I used it for years. And in a nutshell, we need to manually bring those boats in and out and not try to do a quick and dirty and crank the thing up to get out or either to rush up on the trailer and pull it in. It's causing that washing effect. And for all of those boaters, I heard you, that were upset that the ramp was closed for the time it was. These folks worked in warp speed, working with the Army Corps Engineers, Mr. Manager, getting the permits and all of those things to get that thing back open as quick as possible. But we need our citizens to make sure they utilize that in the proper way so we don't have this occurrence again. So thank y'all for coming up. Dr. Gill, is there anything you want to add?
Yes, sir. I just want to add one point, that we are working on some regulations and rules that we're gonna post at the boat ramp. So we would please ask our citizens to adhere to those. That talks about size and weight because we want to protect our boat ramp and make sure it's open for our citizens.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Moody, you want to say something?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Gill, while you're here, can you give us a quick update on the status of the fishing pier?
Yes, sir. We have, you snuck that in, oh, Mr. Moody?
I did.
Okay.
I'll jump in. We have a consultant on a contract doing a design. He's done the survey work. He's getting ready to do the hydraulic work. And approximately, probably about the middle of the month, we hope to have 40% plans and be working towards getting a permit.
Terrific. Thanks.
Very good. Thank y'all. Good night. Thank you. And let me next say, I see Ms. Pat Carroll out there in attendance and from the NAACP. And every year, you make us so proud. We've taken some of our young scholars to what we call the National Convention. And this year, the National Convention for the AXO Plus Competition was held in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. And we had, how many of our kids? About 15 or 20 of our kids that travel?
Eleven.
Eleven of the kids. And one of those won a bronze medal on the national level. We have the gold level kids here on the local, regional level, and then we compete nationally. And one of them, is it Ernest, Ernest Kaya?
Yes.
Yeah, Ernest Kaya, who is a rising senior from Woodrow Wilson High School, representing the Portsmouth branch, won the bronze medal in the category of Music Vocal Classical. Oh, my. That's out of my league. But, and he was awarded a $1,500 cash prize and an Apple iPad. So congratulations. Is he here?
No.
He's not here. He's probably studying. But thank you for all the great work that you guys do. And I think last year, did they go to Vegas? I think it was about that same-sized delegation that went to Las Vegas. And to see our kids here with all of the talents and whether it's music or instruments, performing, and to do that in front of a crowd and in front of their parents and people that they have never seen, and then to do that on a national level, representing our city, I think is just valuable. So thank you for what you do with the NAACP and for what you do with these kids working at the, as the chairperson there. And then lastly, I want to make sure before I turn it back over, and August 22nd, our Back to School Community Day. We've got an enormous amount of folks that has responded. That is exactly what we wanted, is a community day. We plan to have a great deal of fun. We want to make sure every kid that shows up get a backpack with school supplies in it. We've, I mentioned, I think at the last meeting, we had three major sponsors, a presenting sponsor, Mount Lebanon Baptist Church, $20,000, and they're gonna be the presenting sponsor. We have New Testament Church here in Portsmouth. Bishop Jerome Williams has donated $5,000. The developer right across the street here, the Breeden Company, who's building those luxury apartments, also donated $5,000 to help in this activity. We also had another developer, Mr. Dan Ashton, with the Rootmore Company, has donated $1,000. And so we're gonna have a grand affair. We want this to be, this is from council to our citizens, to the civic leagues, to our churches. We don't want to run this. We want this every year, but we want it to be the community. We want our civic leagues participating. We want you to set up tables. We want you to be able to communicate with folks. We just left a work session talking about how do we engage our citizens and find out what our citizens want and don't want. We had a long conversation about our community meetings that we have. We had them quarterly, then we backed it down to twice a year. We go, no one shows up, but everybody has a lot of things they want to say and we want to hear from you. This is vitally important to us. We don't want to hear just the good. We want to hear the bad as well. But we've got to engage with citizens. We got to do that through our civic leagues and do that through our churches and all of our other organizations because that's who we are as a people. So come out on August 22nd at 11 o'clock to 5 o'clock. We're gonna have a, for the kids, a nice drum line competition that's gonna start at 1 o'clock. And we've got college bands as well as five or six high school bands that are gonna be participating. We've got all kinds of activities set up for today for our older citizens as well. We do want it to be community-driven. It's free food. We're gonna eat from 12 to 1. You know, we can't give away free food all day, but from 12 to 1, we're gonna have free food there. And there's still opportunities if a civic league or church want to help with working one of the, we need cookies, we need potato chips, the food and all that's there. We want you to help us participate and we want to work together to show our kids unity in our community and us working together and supporting these kids for the very same reason as I just mentioned here with Ms. Carroll and those kids that go off and make us proud. So please all, come one, come all, August 22nd. And if you have not registered or have not got with Mr. Pace and our Department of Marketing on what you'd like to volunteer to do, please call. You can call myself, call him, whatever you want to do. Anything is acceptable. As a matter of fact, I had a young man call last week and want to bring his cheerleaders. And the little girls want to cheer. And absolutely, we're gonna put them on stage and we're gonna let them cheer. As a matter of fact, we're gonna put them in front of D'Intello's and they're gonna cheer with pom-poms as you walk in. And so when you see those, and that was not our idea. This is the type of program that we want to have. We want you, the community, to come out. So if there's somebody else that cheer, if somebody else does something else, this is a time to showcase it here at D'Intello's in front of all of our citizens. So with that, is there anyone else to have anything to report? All right. Madam Clerk? And thank you.
15-298, Report on Pending Items. Ms. Bernadette Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of City Council. I'm Bernadette Hogg, City Embusman, and would like to give you the report on the non-agenda speakers and pending items from the council meeting on July 28, 2015. There were 10 non-agenda speakers at the council meeting on July 28, 2015. One of the speakers required action by staff. Ms. Creekmore expressed her concern about issues with the homeless at her place of business, which is located in the 600 block of High Street. Captain Rusty Venders will provide you with an update on this issue.
Good evening, Captain.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, City Staff. In reference to Ms. Creekmore's concerns, she had concerns about aggressive panhandling in the 600 block of High Street. Officers went out the next day. Our lead officer, assigned to Old Town, Officer Brian Davis, and Chief Mook actually also went out and spoke with her about her concerns. It's not a problem that's solely in the 600 block of High Street. It is in Old Town, all up and down the street. So what they've been doing is, outside of just being visible to the business owners, visible to the community, they've also been meeting with each of the businesses to educate them about what they need to do in reference to the panhandling. If you see anyone doing that, please call the police. Normally, we have people right in that vicinity anyway. We can get a swift response to be able to deal with it. Also been working with the Old Town Business Association on the education piece as well. At this current time, they've been able to remove those individuals from the 600 block of High Street. They've ventured across Effingham Street. However, we will remain prudent because, of course, they're gonna try and get back downtown because that's where money's being exchanged and people are frequenting these businesses.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Ms. Hope?
Clear.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
15-299, Non-Agenda Speakers. Our first speaker is Douglas Franklin.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm here to address the storm drains and stuff over in Churchillin are running off and they're eroding down into the back of a lot of homes over there. And it's turned around and I've been trying to get ahold of engineers and everything else. I finally got ahold of one and talked to him today and he's coming out to see me tomorrow about it. But what I would like to find out is, can they go ahead and put a sluice pipe down in through there to get rid of the rodent of the ground and stuff and then turn around and get rid of also the mosquitoes and things in that area?
You got some mosquitoes in Churchillin?
Yes, a lot of them.
All right. The engineer's gonna go out and then after he make that assessment, we'll take the necessary action. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
Our next speaker is Steve Carroll.
I only have three minutes. I'll be brief. Nearly two years ago, Mayor, I stood at this podium and warned you about how misguided this $200,000 initiative you had about minority contracting was, that it would institutionalize incompetence, waste, and inefficiency. This summer, the Portsmouth School Board has spent, my understanding, months replacing a faulty boiler simply because they were looking for a minority contractor to fill the job. I'm not even sure that they've even fixed it yet. I know of several HVAC specialists locally that could have done that job in days. I'm gonna quote from you, I'm gonna quote to an article, 722-15 in the Pilot. Quote, "I think Whitaker's ideas are good. I think they're moving in the right direction," Commissioner Junius Thompson II told the Virginia Pilot. "If it means spending more to reach out to firms and to break up large contracts," he said he was okay with that. "I don't think we should allow budgetary issues to impact opening up the process so everyone can have an equal shake in obtaining opportunities," Thompson said. In other words, cost is not an issue as long as it's diversity. This is the kind of incompetent thinking that's determining the economic future of this city. Now, Mr. Bailey on the commission has it right. Bailey wanted to make sure that whoever got the contracts, quote, "Mr. Bailey wanted to make sure whoever got the contracts will be qualified. I think we are missing the point," he said. "I think we need to look at who is capable of doing the job. Can they do the job?" to make sure whoever got the contracts will be qualified. I think we are missing the point," he said. "I think we need to look at who is capable of doing the job. Can they do the job? That's where we need to focus." According to page 167 of our CAFER, this city has now accumulated 85% of its allowable debt limit according to the state guidelines, 85%. If you had a $10,000 credit card, you are now run up to $8,500. Add to this the $20 million we have to spend on the seawall, $30 million that you want to spend to close our jail and the millions more a year that will cost to maintain those people at the regional jail. The Churchland Bridge is probably going to cost us 13, 14 million dollars at least and we're not worried about spending money. You handed 13 million dollars over to the schools that they needed less than this city needed. We've got immense debt that we need to pay down. And this is a school board that's been proven to have a bloated admin budget. Unbelievable.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Let me just say, first of all, it's very unfortunate when we misrepresent what these programs are and how they're being conducted and taking things out of context and talking about budget and money and all of that is not an issue. And it is about budgets and money and it is about right and a wrong and it is about allowing all people to be able to, be able to bring us a service that they can provide to us to be able to eventually get that service at a lower price. And when you have people that have been locked out, Mr. Carroll, and not been able to bid and perform on those jobs that are capable of doing those things, those people need an opportunity to ramp up and it's no different than anything else. And so, when you guys take that out of context and make it seem like that there's nobody up here caring about costs, it is truly being done because of costs. Because when you have more people that can bid and do work here, it will eventually drive down the costs and it will give us a council and you as a taxpayer better leverage to be able to get things done instead of having these, one person only does this and another one person does that and they drive the cost up and because there is no competition and because he's the only guy been doing an enforcement for 20 years or 30 years, you're stuck with whatever that cost overrun and all of those types of things are that people like you never come back up and talk about when we give those guys those contracts and we run over costs. And a lot of those things, no one can prevent because you don't have competition.
May I respond, Mayor?
Absolutely, that's why I'm saying it.
Yeah, thank you.
But the reason I am talking and I want you to talk is once again, this year, I forgot to mention, our Horizon Summer Program just concluded last week and I was once again proud to speak to those young kids from first grade, kindergarten up to seventh grade this year. And Mr. Carroll has three beautiful daughters, but he's got two that work over at the Horizon Center and they were there the other day and I thought of you and I went, this guy, you can't be as bad as you come off to be. You just can't be with those beautiful girls out helping those kids and most of those kids are coming from disadvantaged homes and need that type of guidance and need the type of exposure that Horizon does. And when they went through and announced all of those children and had each one of the teachers and the assistants that stand up and your two beautiful daughters were there once again this year, I thought of you, sir. Now, your response?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm sure you'll agree, they take after their mother.
Yeah.
And I understand your comment, Mayor, and this article goes into that depth. I don't disagree with that.
Okay.
But too often, too often, we've heard lately that it's carte blanche, that this is not a priority. We are a debt-ridden city, Mayor, and you know it.
We understand it.
And please, don't think that I haven't been concerned about it. I've been coming up here for eight years, Mayor. This is not the first time I've raised this issue. You need to look at this from a different perspective. I don't disagree with you 100%, but the bottom line is when you're using city money, it's not your money.
That's right.
We get the lowest price. I don't care who they are. I do not care if it's a woman, I don't care if they're a minority, whoever offers the best price. And I agree, open it all up, but that's not what's being said here.
All right, thank you, sir. Good night.
Our next speaker is Isis Tooton Common.
Ooh, you're doing good. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman. I'm Isis Tooton Common from Peachtree Session of Portsmouth and I have here a petition from Peachtree and West Wind Communities wanting them to reinstate the Route 47 in Portsmouth. The route has been discontinued in Peachtree on July 19th and I'll leave the petition here. And it serves, it serves the students, it serves the seniors, it serves the whole community as long as Peachtree has been there, Route 47 has been coming through. And we think it's a disservice. I have other members of the Peachtree community here with me tonight and we think, we think it's a disservice not to have Route 47 coming through our communities. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for coming up and if you want to leave those signatures up there with Sergeant Arms, I appreciate that. It's a very tough decision that we have to make each year with HRT and the bus routes and the economies of scale and all of those types of things. I think our portion, right off the top of my head, is somewhere around about $3 million what we contribute to HRT. Am I close there, Mr. Manager? I think it's about $3 million. And we're often trying to look at and study all of the routes and the ridership and all of those types of things and making sure we're getting the biggest bang for our buck and where citizens are and need it the most and the most ridership in there. And so, a lot of those things go into the formulation, but we've got a transportation planner here that we can get someone to talk to you and your other citizens about and then maybe we can revisit the bus Route 47. I don't see Susan here, Mr. Manager, but yeah, we'll have someone to be able to come and talk to you about that and then maybe we can take another look at that. But those are some of the tough choices we had to make with, you know, we often have people coming up saying they see the buses riding up and down this street and that street and nobody's on them and why do we have these routes and where's there a better route? And so, these things are happening only to try to make things more economical as well as servicing all of our citizens. So, we're very sorry if we disturbed whatever that route was doing and the service it had there, but we'll have someone to talk to you and your folks and see if we can't come to some kind of conclusion, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. Thank you for coming up. Yeah, Dr. Edmonds?
Yes, ma'am. I concur with you. I was going to say the same thing. I would hope that somebody could talk to her before she leaves tonight.
Okay, all right. All right, Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Shirley Cherry.
I'm here to speak about the monument. I was so excited when I found that we have a monument of black for the Black Union Soldiers. One of our citizens found this and it's in Lincoln Cemetery. It's a beautiful black monument for the soldiers, for the colored soldiers that fought in the Civil, you know, during the Civil War. And we would like to, you know, know if maybe we could, you know, the citizen could get together and we could move the monument and just bring it downtown because it's a beautiful monument. The reading on it is so nice. I mean, it's something that we have never, it's been there for, you know, for a while there. But, you know, I was hoping that to solve the problems, to keep, you know, our Confederate Soldiers Monument there and also be able to put the one there for the color. You know, maybe the citizens could get together to defer some of the costs and we'd be able to move it in that area, some area downtown that the engineers could make it and, you know, just something to be proud of. If you could read what they have written up there about the soldiers and how they fought, you know, during the, during the war. And another issue, you know, I hope that, you know, that would be something that we could talk about. I also understand that
Talking to the mic.
That Mark Warner Camp said that in
Senator Mark Warner?
Yes.
Yes, for me.
That in 2019, there would be 30,000 jobs here in Portsmouth, Virginia. This is what we, you know, understand, but we want to get our people ready. We know too that Portsmouth is really struggling as far as money. Our schools in 2009, we had the highest dropout rate, which was 20%. That was the highest dropout rate in the state of Virginia. And today, according to the Senator, 85% of our jail population is from Norfolk and Portsmouth. So, that's a lot. That's when we look at the education, when we are falling down on our education and we won't have our people ready. So, we need to start looking at what is going to be required. We need to, matter of fact, Scott, Robert Scott, Bobby Scott is in Norfolk tonight speaking about what we could do to try to alleviate some of the men that are in jail. We feel like they're in jail, they don't have, they don't have books to read. When I had some books down there, they told me to come and get them because they don't have any books to read. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. And we hear you loud and clear, education is vitally important, money is a challenge not only in Portsmouth, but in just about every municipality in this country. It is about your priorities and how you go about doing those things. And we're dead serious about changing our educational system, supporting our kids in our school system and making sure that we correct those types of things. And I think we've got a school board and a new superintendent who is, if you don't know, is already reorganizing this year and shifting around people, principals, teachers and all of that, doing some organizational things that I'm sure that may rub some people the wrong way, but change is going to come and that's what needs to occur there. So, now, thank you, a teacher.
May I just?
Yeah, one second.
Just one second.
And then you need to take your seat.
But will we be able to get some vocational, you know, trying to find out from them what they're going to need?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
And we could be able to get our citizens
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Frank Dixon.
I wish to thank the council for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight on a matter that's close to my heart. I stand before you as a husband, a father and member of my community with pride for the rich history of this city. Recently, however, I've become distressed by the dysfunctional state our city's government seems to find itself in. Our city is faced with many challenges that are in desperate need of immediate attention. Our citizens are being asked to foot an ever-increasing bill for initiatives and projects that are of dubious benefit while we contend with crumbling infrastructure, inefficient public transportation, businesses suffocating under the weight of burdensome taxes and cancerous tolls, schools struggling to meet the intellectual and vocational needs of our children and police rapidly becoming unable to adequately address the safety concerns of our neighborhoods. This is not to say that Portsmouth is hopeless. We have a blossoming economic center in Midtown. Recent investments in City Park and the Churchland Bridge will assure use for years to come and our school board is actively engaging citizens and this all gives hope to the tide may yet be turned. But such measures are a drop against an ocean of issues facing us. Far too long, we have been held hostage by ineffective governance and choked by the rhetoric of our city's leadership and the time is to say enough. For 20 years, we have watched our nation and our communities be rent apart by so-called civil and political leaders who would rather champion fear and misunderstanding than face the difficult task of healing old wounds and working with compassion, patience and understanding towards a more peaceful tomorrow. I say this not to disparage, but because I believe in this city and I have faith in this council. Mr. Mayor, members of council, elected leaders of Portsmouth, what makes you different? Will you continue to create distractions like promoting the ill-advisory calls of two council members, the removal of a monument to American veterans that has stood for a century without issue? Publicly recorded real estate holdings of council members or trading necessary services offered to seniors for political capital? Will you continue to use the press to settle personality disputes regardless of the damage that it is doing to our reputation across the region? Or will you step up to the plate and lead this city into a happier, healthier and more sustainable future? Mr. Mayor, this city looks to you to set that example. Let me leave you with one final thought. Many members have little more than a year left on this council and I simply ask, what legacy will you leave? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Wonderful.
Our next speaker is Dolores Knight.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Attorney and Portsmouth Citizens. My name is Dolores Knight and I live in Crowe. I am concerned of how city employees are being treated by the managing team that's forcing the very best employees out of the office to resign or to be fired, like the city orator who has been here for 18 months and he has not produced the paperwork that he's promised for the council. He should have been terminated for the 2015, 2016 budget before it was adopted, benefiting the rent estate tax of the 3 cent that would not have been a burden for taxpayers and senior citizens. Regardless, the orator needs to be, to prove himself with his own projects. Who else could go to work, never turn on a computer for weeks, months? Not people, but just the city orator and that's Portsmouth city orator. The city has lost a great man when you let Dennis Bagley go. He was a talented man who worked and knew many positions in the city. He could work anywhere, do any position or any job that you asked him to do. He would help anyone at any time. He was always willing to help, to assist. If you call him, he would answer the phone. If not, you could leave a message, you could send an email, he would respond. Sometimes I would call and leave him a message or email him or different problems, mainly city trucks, and he would get the job done. He wouldn't call me back because I knew the job would be done. You will never, ever find another man who is dedicated as Dennis Bagley. You will never find another person who will work as hard or as much as Dennis Bagley. Even if you hired five people to let them work a day apiece for a week, they would never replace Dennis Bagley. That's an old saying, what goes around comes around. You may want to try to remember that. It's a short statement. In closing, Mayor, if you and a few other on council who are more professional and cut your speeches shorter, then you wouldn't have to take the time for the non-agenda speakers at five minutes, we could still have it three minutes. So, I'm just thinking, just like tonight, every time someone spoke, you talked longer than we did. Good night.
Thank you, good night.
Our next speaker is Herbert Gant.
Did she just tell me to shut up? I think so.
Okay, our next speaker is Clyde Toler. Our next speaker is Clyde Toler.
Let the citizens fishers all sit before me. So I know I'm in blue, and everybody wear blue, and all military that wear blue. Don't take what was said last week as a disrespect because you wear a uniform. Also, oh, what a different night and all that profanity. Three-year-old kid in my house, grandkids say, "Hey, somebody cursing on TV." I went in there, blue, blue, blue. Hey, a three-year-old can see that. Let's stop that. Don't have that up here no more, Mayor. Okay. Anything I want to, what I want to bring here? I'm not showboating tonight. I never do. I came in when they didn't have cameras. I'm still going to come, and I'm not showboating.
Thank you, sir.
As you said I was, and always on camera. Take the camera off me. I don't need it. Anyway, I want to say this. Be not their rash with their mouth, and let not their heart be hasty to utter anything before God, for God is in heaven and also upon earth. So therefore, let your word be fuel. Three minutes. You know where I'm coming from. All right. I'd like to say I strongly urge you to put public interest ahead of self-interest. Y'all need to do that. Let's do that. And another thing, you go out here on Airline Boulevard, I want you to cut all that old dead grass. Been out there for three years. A little tree growing up there about four feet high in there. Cut that mess down and clean that place up. That whole thing from High Street to the Salvation Army. Get the people out there, clean that place up, and right there where windy was, cut that grass as high as it stands. See, they left the sheriff alone, they've been cut. Okay. Now you can do this. Why are we talking about bringing stuff in these school boats, these school buses and all that? Hey, let's tell everybody to bring two cans of food. Did you see the southeastern food bank? It's empty. So, tell them to bring some food. It's better to have a full stomach than have a pack bag on your back and can't carry. So, let's ask everybody to bring two cans of food. And three minutes is three minutes. Thanks.
Thank you, Sergeant Major. That's a great idea. I'd like to respond, but I was told by the previous speaker to be quiet, so. You look nice, sir.
Our next speaker is Ron Evans.
So happy to be here. However, if you live in Portsmouth, your quality of life is eroded on almost daily basis. The fees and taxes extorted from the taxpayers are just part of the equation. The inane decisions made by our apathetic council majority are void of any empathy to the taxpayers and detrimental to the city as well, like keeping an incompetent auditor on the payroll. Or how about the chance to rid us of not one but two money pits, Willet Hall and the Bowdy Golf Course? Are you so obtuse that you cannot realize that the city is in bad financial shape? So of us, and egotistical, to see that these decisions are illogical? It's almost as if you want to see the city go belly up. You ask the citizens for input, which falls on deaf ears, then you cut our time by 40 percent. Violations occur within the council as well as your precious school board with little to no consequences. Why do we even have rules? It would seem that if you're in local government, you can act with impunity. Then there's the hypocrisy. Some of you speak of divisiveness while at the same time making inflammatory remarks towards other races nearly every time they speak. We neither need nor want any instigators, as the city is probably more divisive now than before some of you took office. My point being that sometimes we're our own worst enemy. I believe that some of you may have a bad connection, for I seriously doubt that any of this hogwash going on is God's will. I surely hope Dr. Patton has a magic elixir, as it would take something short of a miracle to right this ship. And with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, this is still a democracy, not a monarchy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Good night.
Our next speaker is Bruce Carruthers.
City Council. Good evening, sir. My name is Bruce Carruthers. I've lived in Portsmouth for 25 years, and I have sent a tax proposal to Senators Kane and Warner and also to Congressman Bobby Scott, and I was just to see if I could get a response from them. And I was going to just wait for that, but I saw an article in the paper about Bob Williams. And he was a city manager from 1975 to 1981. And he asked the State General Assembly for authority to levy an employment tax and never got any kind of legislation because of all the competition in the state for funds. And there's, like, the western part of Virginia is really poor, and so you're not going to get those votes to pass any legislation.
That's right.
And the only legislation that we have a chance of passing is on the federal level. And this is a tax proposal to levy an employment tax for the federal employees that work in the city of Portsmouth. I'm retired from the Navy Yard, and that was a great job. And, you know, people want to blame the Navy for the situation because there's not a tax base, but I was thankful for the good job I had. And there's thousands of federal employees that work in Portsmouth, but they live in other cities. So, they're paying taxes in those other cities and not here. And so, this tax proposal is, I came up with a formula, and there's different criteria, population of the city against the number of federal employees working in the city, land size. You know, people complain about the acreage or the square miles that the federal facilities take up in this city where we can't develop a tax base from a business. And so, I'm proposing this tax proposal, and you can read the proposal and see if we can get some backing. Senator Kane's representative is going to be in the Churchill Library this coming week, and I was going to go talk to him. And if we could get one of the senators or Congressman Bobby Scott to propose federal legislation that doesn't even need to have the name of Portsmouth on it, it could encompass any city that is in the situation that Portsmouth is in. And I think that's a thing that harms the city. And so, if you could just, someone look at this tax proposal?
Sure.
And also, the shipyard had a, let me just, a beneficial suggestion-
Your time's-
And for the citizens of this city to have a resource to send in for beneficial suggestions. And you'd be amazed, the ideas that the citizens could come up with that would save the city thousands of dollars. I've seen where $500,000 were saved.
Thank you, Mr. Carruthers. I like your idea. It hasn't gotten traction in quite a few years. I think a couple of years ago, we tried to work it in up in Richmond, and I think it made it to the committee floor and was kicked out. But I like the idea and keep pressing.
The federal level.
Federal level is where we like it. But thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Our next speaker is John Sharrett.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, it's good to be here. My name is John Sharrett. I represent the Stonewall Camp. I'm the commander. And as you can fully aware, there's been a lot of controversy about the Confederate monument, ownership, and also the land. And I wish Mr. Councilman Whitaker was here to hear what I have to say. The Stonewall, as y'all know, in your live 14th work session, the city assistant city attorney or interim city attorney told you she couldn't tell who owns it. But I can tell you that the monument belongs to citizens of Portsmouth. And it was, the money was raised by the citizens of Portsmouth and Norfolk County, the state of Virginia, and also all of the South and a lot from the North to put that monument up. It took 17 years to raise the money to finally finish it. And I'm here to tell you that that represents nothing about slavery. Do any of y'all know how many Confederate flags are etched into that monument? Anybody? None. There are none etched into that. That monument was erected in memory of all the Confederate soldiers, black and white, from Virginia, and that were called into service by the governor and fought and died for what they believed in. They weren't slaveholders. There was only 6% of the people fighting that had slaves. Most of them from this area couldn't afford slaves. But I'm here to tell you that we stand ready to take whatever action necessary to protect our monument and to ensure that it's never removed. And we hope that y'all understand our position, just as we do not call for the removal of the Black Union Monument in Lincoln Cemetery. I've known about that for about 15 years. And we're not calling for that, and we don't expect anybody else to call for it. I do know that, I feel, honestly feel that the city of Portsmouth, its residents do not want that monument to come down. Now, you had a rally at the monument to take it down, and 20 people showed up, and that was including several of them in strollers. Okay? So, that should tell you that the people don't want that, black or white. It represents a lot of people. And like I say, we're here to make sure that it stays, and I thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cherry. And you're from Suffolk, is that right, sir?
That's correct. I have, I was born and raised in Portsmouth.
You live in Suffolk, man.
Graduated from Wilson, and I went to Trinity Church. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Good night.
Our last speaker is Frank Ernest.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and citizens of Portsmouth for hearing me. I'm trying to keep this well under the three minutes. I want to talk about the same subject that Sharrett just talked about, because I also represent the Virginia Division, sons of Confederate veterans. One thing's very easy. I hope, my biggest hope is that no one on the council, in this room, or anywhere in this city has already made up their minds and closed their hearing to the facts. You wouldn't want to go before a trial where anybody on the jury has already decided. Same case. I wish you'd be open-minded, know the facts, because I've taught these things to children in many schools in this tidewater area, including here in Portsmouth, about this monument. Let me real quick say that in 1861, when the first state of South Carolina left and was joined by six other southern states that eventually became the Confederate States of America, Virginia, North Carolina, Arkansas, and Tennessee voted not to leave. It wasn't until the federal government called for 75,000 troops to invade the South that Virginia and these other states left the Union. The only reason Virginia left? Defense of Virginia. Virginians fought for defense of Virginia. As Mr. Sharrett said, those citizens were both black and white. The story of black Confederates has not been told until recent years, but they were citizens. Yes, they didn't have their rights like they do today. They didn't have their rights on the northern side of the Mason-Dixon either, but they were citizens. Their home was invaded. Virginians fought for one thing, and one thing only, and that was Virginia. And that's what that monument represents. One thing and one thing only, memorializing the Virginians, not mainly from Portsmouth, but from all the tidewares and all Virginia that fought and died. I once told a group of fifth graders about that, and I said, "If they knew things like that, maybe they wouldn't want to be taking the monument down." And one of the fifth graders, unjaded like we old people are, said, "Sir, why would they want to take a monument down?" And it was harder to explain to him why anybody would want to take a monument down than it was to try to explain what the monument represented. The monument simply represents those who fought and died and defended their home state of Virginia and their city of Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ernest. And so, you're from Virginia Beach, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Welcome to Portsmouth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. All right? Good night. We're adjourned.[1794.57]